Everybody got quiet. It must be time to start the meeting.
I think the mics came on.
It is six o'clock. We are going to call this meeting of the mayor and board to order, and we are going to be led in the pledge of allegiance by Creed Brinkley. He will come up. If y'all would stand, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Creed, thank you for leading us in the pledge. We want to present you with the official lapel pin from the city. Alderman Miller, would you lead our invocation?
Thank you. I'm invited once again, Lord, for doing so. Thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord, for all your many different blessings you have bestowed upon us. And now, Lord, as we move forward with the business of this city, we pray, Lord, that our decision will be pleading in thy sight. And then, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity you have given each and us to serve in whatever capacity it might be. We thank you, Lord, for this great country, this great county, this great city that we live in. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Item five is to approve the docket of claim numbers listed on your agenda. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The motion passes. I do want to make note that Alderman-at-Large Doc Harris is joining us remotely. He serves in the legislature, and he has taken the time out from Jackson tonight to be with us, so we do have a full board tonight. Item six is to approve the minutes from the regular mayor and board of Alderman meeting of January seventh. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The motion passes. Before the next agenda item, I just want to make note that we have many of the mayor's youth council here tonight. Y'all are on the mayor's youth council. Could you please stand up and be recognized? Scott, you're not on the mayor's youth council. Thank y'all for your service. I do want to make note that this is not the entire mayor's youth council. This is maybe a third of them tonight. But just in this year, the mayor's youth council, through about 12 different events, has given back 700 service hours. So I think that's a big deal. They have been committing themselves to the task at hand and supporting our city. And maybe they're getting these hours because they want to go to the mayor's youth summit. But we appreciate all that y'all do, and we hope that y'all will learn a little bit from this meeting about how your government is run and continue to grow into the leaders I know you will be. So we will move on to the consent agendas. There a motion on item seven?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item eight is the donations docket.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item nine is the personnel docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Next, as y'all know, we've been giving community service awards about once a quarter, and we've kind of polled the board of Alderman about who would be deserving, and it was pretty unanimous that this time was for Miles McMath. So we've known Miles for a long time. I remember you from when you were the chef at Timbo's. That's when the steaks were really good. And then I remember you from being the chef at St. Jude and changing the way they serve food to those kids. I think that was a big accomplishment. I've seen you on TV shows as a celebrity chef. Another thing that many of us remember is during COVID, people didn't know how they were going to get their food. They couldn't go to restaurants anymore. Y'all remember that sad time? And you kind of created a new model when you had juniors, and you got people through that to-go line pretty quickly. And it really did help a lot of people to get a good meet in three when they couldn't go sit down in a restaurant. So that was a service to the community. And now you've got the parish. It's a service to my waistline, but I go there. It's great, some really great food. But the reason, the main reason we want to honor you tonight is your work with Meals on Wheels. For those of you who don't know, Meals on Wheels of Hernando has been serving meals for a few years. They're up to about 100 meals twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Those meals are picked up by volunteers and delivered to people in and around Hernando, and Miles cooks every one of them. And trying to think how many people we have known whose last meal was your meal. So I think it's a great service. You're going to get choked up. But I will say, we appreciate everything you do, and we appreciate Meals on Wheels. And we know that you are doing this not to make money. You make your money feeding me. But this is a service you do to the community, and we want to read this special award, and then we want you to come up and receive it and get your picture. The City of Hernando Community Service Award. In grateful recognition of your commitment to serving others and your community, on this day, the City of Hernando presents this award to Miles McMath at the parish for serving Meals on Wheels. So if you would come up and receive your award and take your picture with us.
Mayor, as we get ready to take the picture, we want the Meals on Wheels represented from the Meals on Wheels and the volunteers and the ones that deliver well child to stand out so they show the support. We're so thankful for what they do at the parish.
And we couldn't do it without him.
Same way I couldn't do it without y'all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Miles. We present you every day.
Thank you.
Who's running the restaurant? I see you and Barry both there. All right. Item 11 is approval for a change order of 87.5 for the downtown sanitary sewer rehab project. There have been some changes that just happened. John, would you like to come up and describe those to the board? And also, after that item, number 12 is to make a pay estimate approval, and that's part of that. So if you would describe both those items to the board.
Yes, the change orders for a heavy cleaning bed item, as the CCTV contractor got out there, they ran into a lot of sediment, a lot of solids that required beyond the norm cleaning that's available in the contract. So this gives them a mechanism to clean out those solids, which is critical before they can rehab these lines. From my understanding, a lot of them, more than 10% volume of solids in there. So it's increasing capacity before they ever even get out there and do any rehab. So it's got to be done for CCTV. It's got to be done for the following rehab measures. And I will add that the contract is currently at $1.15 million. The ARPA allocation was closer to 1.5, a little more than that. So there is money available that we need to look at spending in ARPA. So this is not a further burden on the city, so.
And I want to remind everybody that this is ARPA funds that are being spent on this project. We call it the downtown sanitary sewer rehab project. And this was kind of an open-ended project where they were going to be inspecting the lines, and then the money that was left over after the inspections would be spent on whatever we decided is the most important ones to fix.
Truly a find and fix. Lee and I are going to get together sometime and try to prioritize the rehab measures. After they CCTV the entire area downtown, we'll look at those video and see what the best bang for the buck is as far as fixing mostly the highest damage areas that gets rid of infiltration. So and then the payout that's after the change order, that's payout number one for work in October, and the contractor is gearing up now to get back out and get the rest of the CCTV, so.
Y'all have any questions on this project?
Just to make sure. So there's 87,000. Half that's going to be ARPA, and half that's going to be on the city. Is that kind of what we're looking at?
Well, it's half of the ARPA money that was allocated to the city, and the other half is the state ARPA money.
Okay, so it's going, no cost to the city?
Yeah, it's all coming out. We kept the ARPA money that was given to us in a separate fund, and as we spend it, then the state gives us the matching funds as well. So and we have made sure that we are spending every bit. Just as a reminder, Delbert Hoesman came up with a plan years ago and said if we spend it all on water and sewer projects, he would match our money. Every bit of our ARPA money is being spent on water and sewer so we can double it. We think it's a good use of the funds. So if there are no more questions, could I have a motion on item 11?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And also on item 12, is there an approval for that payout?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 13 is the approval to appoint Katie Jewell as election commissioner. Ashley Wadsworth was one of our three election commissioners. She told us she could not serve this year, so Katie Jewell has agreed to accept that position if y'all would appoint her. Is there a motion? Some motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We started last year doing end-of-year updates from the department heads, and tonight we are going to hear from the Parks and Recreation Department and public work. So we'll start with Jared Barkley from the Parks and Rec Department, item 14. This is your 45-minute speech, Jerry.
Don't forgive the conversation. Hey, everybody. Board, mayor, thank you all for having us here, and thanks for your support for this past 2024. Had a lot of great things happen, so I'm going to try to quickly run through them. Just a brief visit into our vision and mission statement. So we want to be the heart of the city of Hernando. And to do that, we want to provide an enhanced quality of life. We want to create these welcoming parks and programs for everybody and enjoy everybody. So age, different accessibility, ability levels, excuse me. And I'm going to show you how we try to do that. So running through what our maintenance did this past year, park maintenance, you can see the hours here, 2,444 hours of general park maintenance. We are in-house mowing and weeding sports complex, so that's 800 hours mowing and 500 weed eating, and then field prep. So your baseball, softball, T-ball, and also your soccer, 500 hours on that. And then irrigation, repair, and maintenance, a little over 200 hours. And Tyron told me that's on the low side. So briefly, that's what our guys have been taking care of in the field this year. Programs and special events. So Dolly Breken is our programs director and has been doing a great job. She's been here for about 10 years. This past year, we, at Dolly, focused on more of outside-of-the-box programming. So she developed herself a language exchange program, and we'll see a photo of it here shortly, which basically had native Spanish speakers and native English speakers in the same room, learning from one another through conversation. It was really interesting. And Dolly has a passion for Spanish, and really, I just took that one in and ran with it. She also developed with Minerva, one of our instructors, a conversations in Spanish class. So we've actually been able to add a higher level of that this year and add some progression to it. We've offered in total 18 individual instruction programs. Within that, they've got different divisions for ages and ability levels, and 250 participants in those programs in 2024. There's a couple of photos from those programs. The top middle is a photo of our Young at Heart, which is a senior citizens program. The third, it's a luncheon every third Thursday of the month. Dolly does a really good job at that. She's got a mill. They do a little potluck and has a speaker each month on that. And then your holidays will have, coming into Valentine's, Valentine's Day, more music, special event type stuff. But Dolly does, she works hard at arranging that. And all the senior programming, like line dancing and exercise, walking, Senior Fun Day, which the police department helps out with during the summer. So we thank them for that. Here's a couple of the programs that I mentioned that we offered this past year. Sports programs. So this year, as a highlight, we were able to, for the first time, provide a specialized program to the special needs community, and that was a soccer program through Challenger Soccer. We worked with Southern Pediatric Therapy in developing that program, developing the skills, which stations to run through, advertising the program, and then also, they were a big help during the event as well. We had 18 registered, so the first time ever, had 18 registered and had about 30 volunteers or buddies. And a big shout out to the middle school soccer teams, boys and girls, for that, as well as the mayor's youth council was a big part in helping that as well. So we appreciate that. Registration's going on for the spring session of Challenger Soccer right now. We've got 13 registered, so looking good. We've also, across our youth sports, have been able to maintain a really high participation number, and we've been beating the four-year average each program. And there's a little brief overview in that. You'll see our basketball this past season took a little bit of a dive, but that was off of a huge number that we had going into last year at the Field House. Probably some of that is we had to push our season a little earlier. We just wrapped up this past weekend, so that may have prevented a couple of folks from playing. But all in all, really good numbers across the board. Just finished youth basketball, like I said, this past weekend, and then our spring soccer is the next one to start off the calendar year, and we've got 575 registered for it. So looking good again. Also, registration for spring baseball, softball, and T-ball is going on now. So for anybody watching or listening, there's that. A couple of photos from this past year. Middle, top is a photo from Challenger Soccer, some of our participants there. And so we got basketball, Challenger Soccer, youth soccer, baseball, adult softball, and Little Kickers program, which is a real popular one within our soccer. That's three-year-olds. So running through our facility highlights from 2024. So everybody remembers, we were down on Conger Park for about a year. Maddox Foundation wanted to just give them, throw the spotlight on them again. They really came up big for us and helped a lot in this rehabilitation project and repair project from Conger Park. It was down for very nearly a year. I think we were a week shy from it being down a year. But in April, we were able to open it up and been enjoying it again this past summer into the, oh, still are. And also in April, the Foundation for Hernando Parks and Recreation funded a new batting cage and put all the funds towards the supplies of it, the batting cage, worked with the vendor and setting the posts and everything. And also, several folks from the community helped make it a reality. So Talbot Brothers, Jonathan and Will played a large part in grading it out, using their equipment, and really being the ringleaders for it. Are also members of the crew. Signature Flooring provided the turf that you see there. MMC donated about three of those concrete trucks full of concrete. And the crew of Hernando, you see here, several of them came out one morning and in April, pretty chilly April, and made it all happen. So just wanted to shine the light on them, and I appreciate them for doing that work. It's been getting a lot of use, too, so it's been a good addition. The Hernando Soccer Complex, we've got new lights out there. So new pad of lights right behind the concession stand. So these are LED musco lights that can be controlled. I can turn them on right now from my phone. Those and the parking lot lights. Those and the parking lot lights have been a huge improvement to the overall experience, but also the safety, especially in the parking lot. It gets incredibly dark out there prior to these lights. So that was a $724,000 lighting project approved by this board to the general obligation bond. That was completed in May on time and and it's it's been great. Looking forward to using it again soon. Another project that we did in 2024 was turned that old concession stand at Kirkendall Fitness Park at the old football field into a really nice all-season restroom. So no more porta-potties. It's nice and warm in there. It's it's a very nice bathroom as far as nice bathrooms go. So we're happy to add that amenity to for the city. Took us a couple of rounds of revisions and bidding, but we're tickled to see it come to life. So 131,000 for that facility. That was completed in September. And Renaissance Park. So most of my year, this past year, has been in working with Kimbley Horn, AERC, and developing plans for Renaissance Park. So we'll have two phases again. Phase one, which is funded through Mississippi Outdoor Leadership Trust Fund grant. You see there 1.7 million and the rest is matched by the city. Will include a three and a half acre wildflower, native wildflower, native grass meadow. And just to shine a little clarity on that, we're we're partnering with Quail Forever, who is creating a seed mix of native wildflowers, native grasses that are specific to this area of Mississippi. So these aren't exotic native wild, we're not throwing poppies or anything into this mix. These are all flowers, grasses that are beneficial to the wildlife that we have here, specific in Hernando. Eighteen-hole disc golf course. We actually did the mulching for those fairways last week. And we'll continue once it's warm enough to get outside and dry a little bit to clean up those fairways. And the Disc Golf Association for DeSoto County has been a big help with that. New trails, a multipurpose lawn and pavilion with restrooms, parking and road improvements. So these are, we've we've spent, like I said, really right out of year, taking this from an idea into construction-ready documents. And here's a rendering of that project. Northwest Mississippi Community College will be the naming rights sponsor for the pavilion. It's going to be an entertainment event pavilion, so we look forward to programming that. And then the other side of Renaissance Park, which is phase two, which will be the, you see here, the highlighted four baseball softball fields. So that is, like I said, four baseball softball fields, artificial turf approved by this board for the infield. And sports lighting, concession building, you see it in the middle there. And also road improvements coming in from Robertson Gin into the parking lot there. And same, at the same time, we've been working with Kimbley Horn, AERC on on those as well. So this will be the Heidel Center for Performing Arts Baseball Softball Fields at Renaissance Park. So they have partnered with us as the naming rights for this complex, which we're very excited about. Talking a little bit more about our new partners. So this board approved a working with Sportsman Solutions in July of last year. And since July, they have been able to have pledged $328,000 from these businesses here. So huge thanks to all of those that are listed here. And we we look forward to working with each and every one of them. So like I mentioned, these two phases, the Nixon General Contractors were approved December 3rd, 2024. And we held our groundbreaking for phase one on January 3rd. Great groundbreaking ceremony. And then our next one is actually tomorrow for phase two of the sports fields project. So everyone is invited, anyone here, anyone listening or watching. It's at 11 o'clock at the Renaissance Park Field by the, next to the skate park, so feel free to come out. I think it's going to be a little warmer tomorrow than it was today, so for that at least. And then just a big thank you to the folks who make it happen. So Dolly Breken, our programs director, Michael Carson, our sports director, Amanda Turby, who's our receptionist, and Brandon Williams, who was our recent hire, August of last year, is a sports director. And Tasia Roberts, who, so this board approved us to add a part-time position. So Tasia is our recreation and event aide. It's a part-time position. She's filled that position really well and is everywhere we need her to be and does it does it with a smile on her face. So very thankful for that added position. Our maintenance staffs, Tyrone Davis, Michael Gross, Stephen Boyce, Jody Howell, Antoine Erby and Randy Williams. And we also have, the board also approved, y'all also approved, a another full-time position that just got filled tonight in the personnel docket. So we're fully staffed and and thankful for that and thankful for this board's support, Mayor's support. And the the cover here you see is the the first showing for the programs and events catalog that we have. Dolly put this thing together from cover to cover, and it will will have physical copies, and but it's also going to be on our website through a flip book. So first look viewing at the cover there. And anybody can find what we're offering at our Facebook page and on the city's website.
All right. Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah.
Thank you for your leadership and to your team for continuing to move our Parks Department forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. After that report, next up is Lee Germany from the Public Works Department.
All righty. Good afternoon. Let me get started here. So work order totals this year, since last year was the first year that we had done this. This is just a comparison from last year to what we had, well, the year before last to last year. So water, you can see we had a good rise in work orders there. Sewer and storm drains. Thankful to have a higher budget this year or last year to get a lot more fixed, so it cut down on a lot of the work orders. Streets, as you guys know, we had the all the ice and stuff like that, so that prompted a lot of work orders with potholes and roads just tearing to pieces, so. Brush, you can see we had a big spike there. As you guys know, we had a lot of issues with our older trucks last year. Our brush trucks breaking down, welding frames and all sorts of good stuff. Well, that's a that's a reflection of that and and having broken down trucks. But luckily, we got two new ones this year, and we are on track to hopefully lower that number tremendously. City Hall, some work orders there. And then we got a total down at the bottom. It's a significant amount more. Any questions on that?
All right. Water plant production, a lot of the same as it was last year. East Parkway, of course, is our big plant in town. Jaybird's on Jaybird and then Lauder, of course, is out on Lauder Road out there. Productions have come up a little bit, but not not a lot. Water plant upgrades this year. We renovated the South Street tank, which is just back here. We paved the exterior and installed the logo. Jaybird Ground Storage Tank Interior Innovation Washout. Water Road Elevated Tank Interior Washout, painted outside and installed the logo. McCracken Elevated Tank Interior Washout, inspected all tanks per contract guidelines. Upgraded upgrades were complete on the Jaybird Road Plant, so it's all up and going. We have a new ground storage tank out there with a new aerator and a new service pump. And expansion to our wellhouse, which allows us to store more chemicals and supplies and also have a little working room. It was getting a little tight in that other one. And along with a ton of control upgrades out there from CSI in Jackson. And the upgrades on East Parkway Water Plant are completed, except for some line insulation. We put another aerator on on our tank out there. Did some upgrades on the inside. Also did a plant expansion there so we could store more chemicals and the guys could have more room to work out there. That basically covers what I just said. Let's see. And also our new water plant that Joe Frank has been engineering on out on Byhelia Road. I think we've got our well pretty much complete, at least the drilling of it. And then the contracts have been awarded for the water plant, so excited to get that rolling. Water account updates. We had a lot, a lot, a lot of requests for fire hydrant meters. We used to only have one. Everybody probably saw it over there on Fairway Trail. And saw a big need for it. But with that need also comes risk to the city as far as bursting lines, people not operating the hydrants well. So we came up with a fire hydrant rental agreement. Basically where we take the payment and the deposit at our office and then we go out and place the fire hydrant meter where we want to put it. That way, hopefully it doesn't adversely affect any lines. And then also it keeps the contractor from running off with their fire hydrant meter and going to use it in Horn Lake or South Haven or something like that. Meters we changed over from manual to radio read, which basically means, and it's obvious, but, you know, manual read, we go around with the tablet, the guy, you know, lifts your meter box lid, reads the meter, puts it back in the tablet and they go to the next one. We upgraded those to, 494 of those over to a radio read, which is we just drive by with a laptop most of the time with the batteries are keeping up with the cold weather. Those have a 10-year warranty on them, so they they tend to hold up pretty well. New water accounts, 979 of those. That's not new houses, that's customers moving, new houses, new businesses, so on and so forth. We only had 13 new irrigation customers this year. And then our locates increased by 2,000. So we had a really, really busy year with boring homeowners doing work, businesses doing work, so on and so forth. And we've we've got a new locator on staff and he is top-notch. He takes his job very seriously. He is a absolute professional out in the field, so I want to give Mr. Mike a shout out for that. As you guys probably know, damages have went to almost none. As far as contractors hitting lines, boring them, it it makes a really big difference when somebody takes pride in their work and has good equipment to work with. Sewer and storm drains, of course, the constant effort to identify rainwater infiltration into city sewers, which is, you know, part of our downtown sewer rehab project. We installed SCADA on seven lift stations this year or last year. That should have them all current, but maybe one or two here or there. We replaced an existing lift station on Tate's Way at the back of Montclair. It's, if you guys hadn't seen it, it is large and in charge. It's a double-decker. It'll pump a lot more, pump a lot more efficiently. And of course, the NRCS projects over at the creek behind Gateway, going down Thousand Oaks. Sure everybody's seen that. It is really, really, really nice. And then this year, me and the mayor worked together and signed an agreement for spraying all these existing NRCS ditches. We just don't have the equipment to spray them and kill the weeds, and as the mayor can tell you, and I'm sure all of you can. It doesn't take long for willow trees and grass and everything to come up and all your work is kind of shot. It looks terrible. So we're getting all those sprayed three times a year for company out of Byhelia. They do a, so far, have done a great job. Street paving, this, I'm not going to go through all these, but you can see all the streets that we paved. Thank you, Joe Frank, for overseeing all that stuff and making sure it was done properly, and board, of course, for approving it. Completed the roundabout landscaping at Highway 51 in Oak Grove. And then we bid out and awarded the contracts and work has started on the one at McInville and Holly Springs. So those are, those looking great. Sanitation updates. I can't tell you how much it's improved. It it's unbelievable. Me and the mayor used to get calls constantly, all day long, missed trash, this, this. They wouldn't pick it up. They dumped the can over. Since they've been coming by each day, the the driver comes by each afternoon, usually right after lunch. They waste connection, send the driver by, they check with the girls up front, see if they missed anything, and then they recover it usually that day. So 164% rate drop in that is is incredible. And then, of course, it's almost 100% recovery rate in 24 hours, so I'm really pleased with them. That's really, really turned around. Brush loads, it increased quite a bit this year. I think mainly because of the ice storms that we had. But it went up to 144 loads, 36,000, 32 cubic yards taken to the rubbish pit out on Star Landing. And then field engineer. Chris has been going out and inspecting just about every single storm drain, a sewer pipe and water pipe that's been going in the ground. And it is, it is paid back tenfold. This is going to reduce the city's cost down the road with, I won't say shoddy workmanship, but maybe some skip steps on Friday afternoons. This will eliminate that. Utility permitting invoicing CCTV and construction management. Establish relationships with with development teams and design review stages. Communicate city of Hernando subdivision regulations to development teams. So something that me and Chris had talked about for a while, and Austin's been on it too. We wanted to have meetings with these developers before they start a subdivision, no matter the size. So we can say, hey, look, this is what we're expecting. This is what we're going to do. And we want a nice product when it's finished. And it has helped us tremendously. There's been no surprises to these developers as far as expenses go, whether street sign requirements, our storm drain types, all sorts of stuff. It it has been really, really, really nice. And I'm sure Austin can attest, it's been a lot easier down the road. Field inspection of infrastructure installation, like I mentioned, construction plans as-built. Testing results in form, moved back online, backed up by our server. So two years ago, we got a plotter and a scanner over our office. And Chris has scanned hundreds of sets of as-built and plans for these subdivisions and put them on our server and on a standalone hard drive. Real-time mapping of infrastructure assets during construction. So Chris can go out and collect these storm drains, all these sewer lines, as they're going in the ground with our GPS device. And then it's updated almost daily by our GIS department. So weekly mapping changes updated online in app, almost instantly, like I said, versus by annually. We were only before getting those done by annually. It's, it was frustrating because we were collecting all these points. And then the mayor would call me and say, hey, man, where's the new subdivision at? I said, well, it's coming. It's coming. We're working on it. So the whole that was getting that all updated to an online version, as you can see a little snapshot there on the right. 2024 water line updates emphasized resulting in locator accuracy and line strikes cut by 50%. So that's huge too. And another thing we've kind of rolled out with our, as part of our subdivision regulations is we make sure that our locator goes out to every subdivision, hooks the locator up to these lines underground, these little locating wires, and every line is locatable before we leave and we sign off on this bond. That way, we know it's good, we can map it. Not only was it mapped going in the ground, but now we can go back and locate it at any time that that the utilities need to be located. New subdivision constructions immediately collected in real time. Can see those up there. So I use it, TAB uses it, which is our billing accountability supervisor, and Chris uses the GPS. And just this year, we've collected 3,945 points with it. And that amount saved is what we would have been charged by a contractor to collect those points. So the GPS, I I think it was around $11,000 when we bought it three years ago, but So the GPS, I, I think it was around $11,000 when we bought it three years ago, but the savings on it is, is crazy. And that, and we don't have to call anybody out in the middle of the night and say, hey, we dug up a water line, call your contractor, they, they come out and GPS it, we can do it right then. So it's really, really nice. Down below that type of points that we've collected this year. We're also working on something right now that, it's, it's in the works, we're going to number every one of our manholes in the city that we own. That way, if the Mayor calls me with a problem, I can send somebody out to Manhole 35, and they know exactly where they're going and what they're looking at. So that'll be a tremendous help, too. So thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all for your support on this boring, entrenching ordinance. I know it can be tricky, I know it can be expensive for developers, but it, it has saved us, I, I don't even want to put a number on it, the amount of dollars it's saved us in time. So we built the flagship program in the state of Mississippi, permitting, vetting each job, location contractor, subcontractor, and area affected, the city water service area. Invoicing contractors charged by the foot for the work areas, you guys know. We also require CCTV before and after, if the line falls within, if their work falls in within a certain distance of those lines. Advanced notice of construction, this has been huge, too. Thank you guys for helping us implement that and modify our ordinance. They have to give five-day notice before they work in the areas, that be a door hanger is what we prefer. Some, some of the contractors call. AT&amp;T puts out signs also, and it just reduces our calls into the city, reduces confusion, what is everybody doing in my yard, what are these flags doing? This is a clear picture of what's going to happen. Pre-construction meeting with utility contractors, city officials reviewing city ordinance provisions and laying out each job and how it should be approached before notice to proceed. So we, me and Chris, or me and Courtney, or Courtney and Chris, have this meeting with every contractor before they start work in the city of Fernando, and it is, it has really, really helped us. Just not, for them not to be in the dark. They don't know. They may work in all the branch where they don't have any of this stuff, or, you know, whatever. Ours is a little different. Post-construction follow-up, accountability, place on contractors to fix mistakes and be responsive to homeowners' concerns. If they damage the homeowner's lines, they fix them because they're unlocatable, because we don't have locating wires on them. Chris put in a little slideshow right here. As you can see, something's bored right through our storm drain right there. It's found by Comcast Prescope CCTV, is in Winningham Section D and E. This is a energy line in Scott Meadows, the brand-new subdivision out by John Deere. Brand spanking new, hadn't even been turned over to anybody yet. So already got an energy line bored through it. But now that we caught this in a reasonable amount of time, those contractors that did this are having to fix it. And they, they either fix it themselves, or they pay a qualified contractor to fix it. So this one's found by an AT&amp;T Prescope. All right, here's a dangerous one. It was an atmosphere crossbore through an eight-inch concrete sewer on Southern Street. It was found by a ceasefire Prescope. The reason this is so dangerous, not only for us as far as infiltration to our sewers, you can see the water pouring in it right there from rainwater. So all that water's going in there, but if you send a plumber out there and he decides not to camera that, and he thinks there's an obstruction right there, then he's sending a root cutter through there. That root cutter doesn't know it just cut a gas line. So guess what just filled everybody's house? Here's another one. Seaside crossbore through an eight-inch concrete sewer on Church, or on Church Street. It was found by Seaside also. So that was, they're not, their lucky day. And then that's it. Anybody have questions? Anywhere?
Thank you, Lee.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for always recommending things to us that we can hopefully approve so that we can keep you moving in the right direction and support you in your efforts.
Thank y'all.
Please thank your team for us as well.
Absolutely.
All righty. We're going to move on to Item 16, which is the approval to proclaim Arbor Day on February 6, 2025.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 17, there's been a request by some residents to change the speed limit from 25 to 15 on Memphis Street from Robinson to Commerce Street. You'll notice we've added some parking spots down through there with the hotworks going in, and it's just, it's a road that needs people to drive slower. So Chief, Chief here, do you recommend this change to 15 for that section of road?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns from the Board?
I'm, I'm fine with this, but what's, what's a normal procedure for a citizen that maybe wants to adjust the speed limit in front of their home?
So if they would send the notice to my office, then we will assign that to the Chief and sometimes the engineer to look at, but usually it's the Chief's call, and the Chief will do a little study on it and make a recommendation to this Board. Any other questions or concerns? If not, can I have a motion to approve that change in speed limit from 25 to 15?
Motion?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Lee, will you work with the Chief to get the new signs up as soon as you can?
Certainly will.
All right. Thank you. Item 18, Joe, would you like to talk about this approval for drainage easement purchased from Wayne's Uter for $1,000 for the Deer Creek EWP project?
Okay. Can I say something about Lee's report?
Sure.
It's definitely paying off right now, but it's certainly going to pay off years from now, because a lot of stuff that we know was put in 50, 60, 70 years ago, we know it's there, but a lot of times, we just can't pinpoint it, and it sure, sure was, sure is going to help somebody years from now be able to keep up things, save the city money, and have a good permanent record of it.
I agree with that. Another thing that I noted when he was talking that's going to save us money in, in the future that we won't even notice is being saved, or Chris inspecting all those new storm drains going in the ground. And we know all the money we've had to spend on defectively placed storm drains that 20 years from now will just be working properly because we're inspecting as it goes in.
Absolutely. Okay. As you know, we are working on this EWP project, the next one coming up, and, and obtaining the easements. And I think we got, we think we got about eight easements we had to get in different spots in town, and we're down to two of them. And we've been talking to the two we need. This is one of them. This is over on Tara Drive. This person purchased this property through a tax sale, and it mainly, mainly has a drainage ditch through the middle of it, that's why it was a tax sale. Anyway, that's, that's about it. But I've been talking to them, the person lives in Houston, Mississippi, and in our conversation back and forth, in the need for the easement, they suggested $1,000 for the easement would be what they needed. So basically, you have to make a finding that $1,000 would be a fair price to pay, and that it would cost us a good bit more to get it appraised, possibly go through court and do a lot of legal work and engineering work to satisfy a purchase of the property when they've asked for $1,000 is what they would like to have for the easement.
I think it makes good sense for us just to agree to pay the thousand instead of going through all the other monetary problems we would go through to get to that point.
We know that an appraisal costs $1,000 just to, if we have to go further, we would have to, have to pay the appraisal to be able to satisfy them.
Stephen, do you agree that this is legal and proper for us, this Board, to approve that?
Joe Frank and I talked about it before, and you seem to make a finding based on his recommendation that this will be less expensive than taking the legal steps to probably pay more to work possible.
And Mayor, along with that, can we make Attorney Pittman's statement be included in the minutes for historical data?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There's no questions. Is there a motion on that item?
No move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Lee, would you like to come up and talk about the approval of the emergency water main repair at Robertson Gen Road?
Sure.
$28,564 from Cleveland Construction.
So we first noticed water pouring across the parks parking lot over on Robinson Gen. We weren't, we thought it was runoff of rainwater or a natural spring there for a while. But as the leak progressed, it ended up being three leaks, starting just north of the baseball fields, all the way south under Dale Wilson, Mr. Dale Wilson's driveway. So the Cleveland's came in, they replaced three sections of line, all in different spots, and then they, instead of tearing the driveway out, they bored under the driveway in order to not disturb the brick driveway, and then extended the line a little further south to get it away from Mr. Wilson's driveway so they could tie in with the new subdivision.
And an added bonus is if you think that that fixing that water leak has dried up the outfield of the baseball field that was standing well?
It has. We think so. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve that emergency repair?
Motion?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 20 is the approval to apply for the Raze Planning Grant and to adopt the resolution. Just for some background, this Board has twice voted to apply for the Raze grant in the past. The Mid-South Planning and Development District has offered to help us apply for it, and they have some very skilled federal grant writers. And what we came, the decision we came to was not to apply for the grant, but to apply for the planning grant. What we're finding out is to really be a viable candidate for the actual grant, you need to do the planning grant and have it engineered, and that's generally the way they do those. So we're asking for the resolution so we can do the planning grant. We would have our match money, our match would be $156,000. That would get the entire project engineered and shovel-ready, so we were ready to apply for the next grant. This is basically the same Raze grant y'all had approved before, with the addition of, Gia thought it would be a good one, and the staff thought it would be good, to add in the connection at Renaissance Park, the road, you know, we're coming in with the ballfield money from one side, with the most of grant money from the other side, but there's about a $2.3 million untapped or un-engineered road there in the middle. So that will be part of this engineering planning resolution as well. So the thought would be, we would have a lot better chance to get this planning grant, we'll do the engineering, get it planned, and then once the federal government sees that we have done that properly, we are really high on the list to get funded for construction. That's the way those generally work.
And this has a lot to do with bike paths and sidewalks?
It does.
To connect people around the city?
It does.
Okay.
Right. And of course, that road connector through Renaissance Park will be another east-west route to help people move, move through there. So can I have a motion to approve the resolution to apply for this?
Motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 21 is the utility adjustment. Can I have a motion on those?
Motion? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now adjourned.